I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda review. Is there anything on the agenda that anyone would like moved? I'm sorry. On the agenda, anything? Anyone want moved? Nope. Okay. Comments from the select board? Not on the agenda? No? Town manager?
I can wait until my report.
Citizens on topics not on the agenda? That's not. I guess everyone's here for the agenda. Okay. Review the minutes from the previous meeting? Have a motion to approve the minutes?
We approved the minutes of the meeting of 3:10?
Yep.
25?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I had two questions. Did we, or did we have applications from everybody whom we appointed at the last meeting? I just wanted to double check. I mean, we...
I do not believe that we did. The select board made several appointments inside the meeting.
On the spot, right?
They were on the spot. And we did not have applications for those.
So, but in future, aren't we supposed to have applications on first?
Yes.
Okay, so can we clean up a little bit there and be a little bit more exacting?
Yes, I do think we should have applications for all appointments. We implemented that several years ago, but the board chose to make those appointments in the last meeting. So, I do, in the future, you can ask me if we have an application on an appointment, and I'll let you know.
Okay. And the other was just a question. They, you know, we had discussed having Tyler and John getting Easter Sunday off at the transfer station, and that's noted exactly in the minutes. I wondered, just for future reference, does, with a decision like that, does it make sense to explain how we arrived at that decision? I mean, are there, I mean, that's a fairly clear-cut case, but in general, does it make sense to sort of include the reasoning in case somebody at some point, you know, goes back and says, why did they, how did they come to that conclusion?
I think when we get to the personnel manual, can we just make it a holiday for them?
I think that's what we should do.
Yeah. But I meant, just in general, you know, that we don't just, I mean, there are different ways of taking meetings and I know, minutes, and I know sometimes it's just, this was the motion, and this was the approval, this was the decision.
Yep.
I just find that sometimes it's helpful to know, how did we arrive at that decision? Okay, that's, I'm done.
Would you like that in these minutes for that decision?
It's probably not necessary. In this particular case, does it make a difference? Probably not, but I think, in general, I personally like to know, remember, how did we get to that conclusion?
What could consider tabling the minutes? We could include more detail.
It's not essential to me.
I don't know how anybody else feels.
I think it's fine. I think if we amend the personnel policy to make Easter holiday for the transfer station.
Any others like?
I just want to put, I think what Rika's saying is in general. I've heard her say that several times. I don't think she's so worried about this particular issue at this time, but I understand what she's saying about keeping enough of a record on decisions so that we kind of know how we got there. I've run into that in the past at the planning commission, where we tried to get an answer to why something existed in the town plan or the zoning bylaws, and we actually had a meeting in here, and some of the older folks were here, and they were all like, no clue. So, having some of that information is good, I think.
Maybe we should table the minutes and have Nicky?
No, I think these minutes are fine. I think moving forward is okay. That wasn't a big deal.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes then?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's? Resolution of the town of Weathersfield, appointing of DRB members. I guess this is a Brandon.
Yeah, so, when the resolution was adopted, it had a range from three to nine members, and when we were reviewing this resolution, the town attorney found that the minimum is five. So, since there's a range, this would clarify that, and then we'd also recommend that the select board cap it to five members with three alternates, rather than have a range from five to nine. It makes it a lot easier to keep track of, and since this is a pretty important board that does make decisions in town, it makes sense to cap the number to five, or seven, or nine, whatever the select board wishes, but we'd like to have a firm number on this board.
Is that something we have to decide tonight?
I think it should be decided, because currently, the resolution that was adopted doesn't agree with state statute, because it ranges it from three to nine, and three members are not allowed by statute. We need to have at least five. So, this resolution resolves all of that, but it does make a decision on the number of people on the DRB.
So, did you give a recommended motion here? No?
The motion would be to adopt the resolution as written.
As it is in this packet here?
Yep.
That we have here? And that would be to set the board at five with three alternates, I think you said?
Yeah, three alternates.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'm curious about the two-year term, or the term is two years, right?
Yes, that's how the original resolution was adopted.
Okay. And do you feel like that's worked well?
I think it's working fine so far.
Does statute make any reference to terms?
I didn't see anything in statute that made reference to terms. I do think that gives people some time to, because, you know, one year on the ZBA, you have a lot of turnover. I think two years gives people enough time to be on there and learn it and...
Well, ZBA is statutorily one year.
Oh, is it? Okay. Do you want me just to research real quick and make sure DRB is not?
Yeah, I don't recall if there was something set for the DRB or not. It seemed like there was.
All right, just give me one second here.
I don't recall what it was, but it seems that there was. How's everybody doing tonight while we're at this point?
It's nice to see a full house.
Everybody liking this winter weather? Snuck up on us after a tease of spring? I'll take, I want the spring weather back. Move to Alaska. You must be a skier. Yeah? I was driving around the other day, I was looking at this, our area here, the snowmobile trails all being closed, and they're technically open by law until the 15th of April. It's like, wow, season's getting awful short. So, I think, I think it opens December 15th and closes April 15th, and we hardly have any snow in the middle of December anymore, and now we don't have any now. It's unfortunate for that group.
Do you think there's an action item to bring back?
I second that motion.
Sorry, it's not on the agenda.
Oh, yeah. Other business, other business, other business.
We could maybe go on to the next agenda item and then come back.
Local concerns of the Salmon Bridge?
When Brandon gets back to us.
Yes, that would be...
You want us to go on to the next?
I like watching him under pressure.
Okay. Okay. We're going to go on to the next one then.
Uh, wait, hang on.
We have, we had a motion on the floor though.
Yeah, you can, but we can postpone the motion, or postpone the topic and come back to it after, when we finish. I think you're okay moving on, you just can't, you can't make another motion yet.
Okay.
I think you'll be okay moving on, though.
Local concerns, salmon-covered bridge. Is this you, Brandon, or is this Ray?
I'll just kick it off real quick.
We keep moving you further and further back in the corner over there, you'll be outside.
This actually isn't a highway department project, it's a state project on a state bridge. This is the first meeting for everybody in the public to hear about the project and to voice any concerns and have any questions. So, that being said, just be patient, hear them out. If you have any questions at the end of it, raise your hand, ask. This is all informative. Thank you.
And do you guys have a presentation that we sent you?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now.
Will you do that ahead? Not for me, but it might be helpful for... Hi, I'm Laura Stone. I'm a project manager with V-Trans. We're here, like Ray said, this is a local concerns meeting for the Salmon, the Salmon Bridge, Bridge 83 over Sherman Brook on Henry Gould Road. This is a really, really early stage of our project development process. A project has been programmed under the Town Highway Bridge Program. We are developing a scoping report, but prior to developing that scoping report, we really want to hear the needs of the town, so we know what alternatives to look at in that report. So, we've hired Hoyle Tanner for, as a design consultant, to scope and design the structure. They are the experts at covered bridges, so you guys are in good hands. I'll pass it on.
Libby, can you press back on that so I can?
Do you have a lecture?
I do not, yeah. I'll scroll for you.
Is there any way we can turn on the light over the lectern? It's the one dark spot in the whole room.
Doesn't have a light bulb.
Can we get one out?
Oh, too bad, sorry.
I'm going to get it.
Kelly, Kelly.
It's not working.
Scoping? Can I ask them what that means? I don't know. Can I ask them? Yeah? Go ahead.
Could I ask a question before you get started? You've used the word scoping multiple times. It's in a letter we got in our packet, and this young lady just used the word scoping. Can you please explain what that means? I have no idea.
Yeah, it's the, so, scoping study, it's just the first part of the process to go through design.
Are you proposing to do something to the bridge? Is that what this is all about?
Ultimately, so...
Because we're completely in the dark about what this is.
Sure. Yeah, we've got a PowerPoint presentation we're working on, because everybody loves PowerPoint, right? And we'll go through the process. The first step is we just do a study. We're looking at alternatives, and we get input from the town. That's where we're at right now. Once everyone agrees to the proposed work that we're looking at, then we would go ahead and design. So, we're a number of years away from it.
Could I ask why?
Why?
Why the focus on the salmon-covered bridge? What's instigating this?
Turn that, oh, sure.
Go ahead, Ray.
So, again, this is the very beginning of trying to decide how to repair the bridge.
That's what was missing. This is a repair to the bridge. That's the piece we don't know.
You'll learn that as soon as this presentation is done. This is the very first meeting, this is the very first public hearing, so just, I just ask you to be patient and try not to get excited, and this is a long process, and these folks will walk us right through it. So, again, it's just a scoping study to figure out how to do future repairs on the bridge, and the use of the bridge, and any concerns.
Okay, now that makes sense.
So, that's all this is.
That's the piece that was missing.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, there we go. All right, thank you. Yeah, so hopefully that clarifies it. So, again, tonight, local concerns meeting. It's going to be yours. That's perfect.
We're still in the Stone Age here.
No, this is great.
With technology.
Can she get rid of that movie?
No, I think we're fine, we're fine, so thanks.
We're going to buy her a better chisel.
Just quick introduction, so my name's Sean James, I'm the project manager for the project. I'm going to be doing the presentation tonight with Joseph Beecher, who's our senior structural engineer, and also, she was on, she's on Zoom. Kayla Hampi was supposed to be here tonight, but got a cold and decided to leave that at home and not bring it to everybody here. But she did a lot of the work on the slides tonight, so just wanted to recognize Kayla. So, tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the introductory purpose and need, what's the purpose and the need of the project, kind of getting to the question that was asked earlier, talk a little bit about the existing bridge. We've done an initial inspection, so we just want to give some highlights on that, and then talk a little bit about the next steps and schedule of the project. Go ahead, sorry. Can you go back one slide? I think you jumped one. There we go, okay. So, this project eventually will have federal aid in it, and part of that process is just looking, and it's good practice anyway, what's the purpose and need, kind of we're asking for. So, the whole purpose is to have a safe crossing at Sherman Brook for the public, address any structural deficiencies, deterioration in the bridge, which there is some, Joseph will get into that, and extend the life. It's a preservation, repair, rehabilitation project, and the need is because of the, and we'll get into some of the details on that, it needs some rehabilitation, needs some work to continue to function as it has in the past. And then the last part, community needs and considerations, that's why we're here. Again, this is very early, no decisions have been made, very little in the way of design has been done. We're here to get information from the town, any concerns. Next slide. So, we have a location map here. Hopefully, everyone's aware of where the bridge is, short detour there, crosses Sherman Brook on Henry Gould Road and right off 131, so very short detour, nice location, little park right next to the bridge, if you're not familiar with it. It's just an elevation view, go to the next slide. So, little history on the bridge, it has an interesting history, which kind of ties into some things Joseph's going to show, but it was originally built, it's a Bruce Tasker Bridge, he was a famous bridgewright back in 1870s era, and constructed in 1870 in a different location, Stoned Pond Road. Then it was relocated in 1959 and used as a salt shed, which that kind of ties into some of the pictures we're going to show. Eventually relocated to this site in 1986, and it's been on the, it's listed on the National Register of Historic Places since 1974. The type of truss is a king post truss, decent span for that, it's usually used in a smaller span structure, 60 feet, 61. We listed the horizontal vertical clearance. And the current weight limit is six tons, that's something we'll be looking at as we move a little forward, we'll be looking at some of the structural analysis of the bridge. And it sits on reinforced concrete abutments that were built back in the 1986 time period. This is hard to see in the back, but how do we know what was built back then? We do have some plans from 1986. Just shows kind of a, it's kind of an interesting abutment, I'm not sure where the, we know who did it, and was this Paul, but it's just kind of an interesting design there, but we do have some existing information on the bridge from that time period. So, the inspection findings, we listed here, this is what, V-Trans? So, V-Trans comes out and inspects the bridge every couple of years, and lists from zero to nine the condition of it. So, zero is closed, nine is brand new. So, you want to be closer to nine than not. So, it varies between seven for the deck, five for the superstructure, eight for the substructure, and the channel is an eight. So, overall, those are fair to good ratings, and those are, again, evaluated every two years and reassessed. All right, and this is the point where...
Thank you, Sean. Brandon, can you go back a couple of slides? I just want to zoom in to that section right here. I just want to go over the terminology, because we're going to show you a bunch of photos, and I want to make sure you understand what we're showing there. So, we've got roof rafters on top, we've got the cross beam, and horizontal member, the two trusses, the north and south trusses, you have the deck in, floor beams, and then the knee braces. So, when we go through the next few slides, I'm going to explain as to what the deficiencies that we noticed in the field on all those different elements. Now, you can go forward on those two slides. So, we're going to start from the top down. So, the photo on the left there shows one of the roof rafters that came to levers past that top cord on the truss, and you could see that, that you have some, you could see daylight right through it, so which is not good. You have a split into the wood. There's quite a few rafters on the roof that needs to be replaced. We've identified seven or eight of them out of 57 on the bridge, so about 12 to 13% of the roof that we've identified through our inspection that needs to get replaced, and there's a bunch of other ones where we have some rot that we may be able to clean up the rot, and then put some wood epoxy and clean it up. The roof is in very good condition, you could see the different color on the roof boards that was replaced when the roof was done a few years back, but in the process of removing the roof rafter, we may need to get into removing some of those roof boards and able to access that. We also want to look at other options to sister those members, meaning that if a member could stay there without causing any issues on other members, we could add another member next to it, and not able to go through replacement of more members to get to that. Next slide, please. Well, the other thing on the roof that we have is that when the two roof, the roof rafters, when they go to the peak of the roof, there's a gap on the top. Usually, they butt it up together, but for some reason during construction, or maybe from the wind, when the wind is blowing in the bridge, there's some movement there, and you could see some racking through. So, we definitely want to shim up all those gaps and make sure everything is tight, that way we don't have those issues in the future. Upper bracing members are lacking, it's very few, it's that diagonal knee brace that I mentioned earlier. Some of them have some splits, as you could see there on the photo, you could see that that's a split right through the member that needs to get repaired. The one thing that we usually see on the cover bridges is diagonal X-bracing on the top, so when you're looking on the plane view, you have a X brace, and this bridge is lacking that, they don't have any of that. So, when you have the wind forces against the bridge, the only thing that's keeping it nice and square is those diagonal knee braces. So, as we move on through the project, we're probably going to make a recommendation to add some additional members to brace the upper portions of the bridge to include some kind of X-bracing that will be connected to the cross beams. Next slide, please. Now, we're looking on the top cord of the truss, you have the horizontal member, then you have another one on the bottom, and then you have the verticals and the diagonals. So, this is, the photo on the left shows a diagonal crack through the top cord, so that crack extends through the member, so we call that a split when we see that condition. So, that, the town has attempted in the past, I believe, to repair it. There's a couple lag screws, there are some bolts, but that connection is not holding up really well, so it definitely needs to do something better than those lag screws that we have there. And the top cord, it takes a lot of compression, so when the loads are going on the bridge, either a live load or snow load or the self-weight of the bridge, it wants to buckle that member, so when you have a split, you have a severe weakness into that member, so we definitely need to do something about that. The, this is a nice pick that we used during our inspection to identify any rot or any splits, and you could see that this is a portion of the vertical member that goes through the top cord, that you could see a big split, and then on, at least on one location, we identified one of the diagonal members that had sheared off that end of the vertical piece and has shifted the bottom cord, so that's another deficiency that we're a bit concerned about, that we need to address it. And then here, you have a rafter supporting, supporting the roof rafters from the roof. Next slide, please. More truss members, I'm sure you've heard or you've seen it, there's some activities, there's some animal activity there. The bridge was used as a salt shed for 27 something years, and it has absorbed a lot of salt on the lower members. So, what we've heard from some of the butters is that there's a porcupine that comes here every so often and chews up the wood, and on some locations, we have almost half of the wood gone from all the activity that we've seen there. So, the town has done a good job, I'm assuming the town has painted those members over the years, and that appears to work for a while, and then animals get back in there and then keep chewing up the wood more. When we did the inspection, we saw some more fresh marks where the paint used to be. So, we have a wildlife biologist in our staff that we consult in, and we look at different options as to what we could do here to prevent this from happening. Another thing that's interesting is that when the bridge was relocated to this location in 1986, there were some members that were spliced on the lower portion of the bridge, and those members are intact, there's no damage from those animals whatsoever. It's only the ones that they're original, that you have the salt penetration. We're also going to look at if there is a way to extract that salt from the timber. We don't believe there is, we've never encountered this kind of situation, so this is kind of new, but we have the tools in the tool bag and the right people to research this and come up with some solutions. So, it's a big problem, you have a big member that's been chewed up to half of the section, so you have a reduced capacity, and that's not good when you're on critical areas where you have a lot of loads, where the load is coming through and overstressing the members.
Kind of interesting, too, we had a project years ago in Rockland, Twin Bridge, which they, the town did the same thing, took the bridge, put it on the ground, used it as a salt shed. There was a plan to put it in a park, reuse it, kind of fell apart, but it never connected the two until we saw this bridge, and I was like, oh, kind of interesting. So, they could potentially have the same problem if they end up reusing that bridge. Not uncommon for these covered bridges, those salt sheds.
So, other deficiencies that we've noted is the split, the breaks, the weathering from, we have the window openings on either side, so the elements cause some weathering into those members, the truss members, but they're not too bad. Most of the issues are with animal activity, with chewing up the wood on the lower boards. Next slide, please. Looking more down below, underneath the bridge, below the deck where you drive, you have more of those vertical members that are split right through it, you can see ice cable in there, you can see more rocks. The area needs to be free for airflow and to dry out, and whenever it doesn't, that water is going to soak up the wood and it's going to cause the issue. So, some of those members, we could repair with wood epoxy, other ones, we either need to replace in entirety or splice a new member to that. Next slide, please. More damage on the lower cord, that's the horizontal member that the deck is supported on, so here's in other locations, I could see old paint and then the fresh marks from the porcupines, based on what we know. I'd like to hear from others if you've seen any other animals in there. We also talked about putting some trail cameras in there to identify if there's any other animals, but we're going to coordinate with the town and V-Trans when we get to that point. And then you see more breaks on the lower portion, you don't see any of this because it dries on the top surface, and when you go underneath, then you see there's some rock and there's more breaks, so nothing is alarming. I don't want to alarm anyone, we've seen a lot of things in here, and we're just letting you know what we've seen, and then we're going to go through the steps to determine what needs to get done. Next slide, please. This is again looking from underneath, that's one of the floor beam members that is supported deck, and you can see another split that doesn't go here, but there's a gun, there's another four beam on the other side of that, so you know it looks bad, it's not that bad, it doesn't cause any alarm, you know, it doesn't happen. Other conditions, you can see the check room through the floor beam. That's normal, as the wood dries out, it's normal for the wood to check in that condition, so the checks are good, the splits are not, they're not good when we identify them. Next slide. The portals in good condition, normally, what we see on the cover bridge, we see a lot of damage from oversized vehicles, but there's none of that that we've identified here. Maybe there's one or two cross beam that you got some damage, but for the most part, it appears like people are driving within the weight limit and within the clearances that the bridge provides without causing any damage. We're doing some other cover bridges throughout the state, and there's, that's a common issue where people with oversized vehicles come in and cause a lot of damage on the portals and also other members, but you don't have any of that. But you don't have any of that here. Portals are in good condition. Next slide. The railing, it's a little bit too short on some locations. You have some steep slopes, so we're going to present options to extend the railing a bit further out and make it safer for vehicles should they go off the road. Make sure that they could recover without going into the steeper slopes. Next slide. So as we move forward, as Sean mentioned, we are on the early phases. As we move forward, we're going to look at different rehab options based on what we've seen. The rehab is a very feasible option. We're going to recommend different options as to what we have to do on different members. We're going to cost them out, and we're going to do the most cost effective. And also taking into account the historic aspect of the bridge. We have to have another meeting, the next meeting we're going to have is with the V-Trans Historic Cover Bridge Committee, where we're going to discuss the same thing that we're showing here, but also coming up with recommendations and actions as to what we have to take. The two loadings that we're going to look at are the five-ton loading and the 12-ton loading. If we determine that we could replace a few more members to bring it up to six tons, we may just keep that six-ton loading without having to reduce that to five tons. But on our scope of work, we had those two loadings. We're going through the analysis to determine what the bridge is good for. There's a possibility that we may come back to V-Trans and the town and make a recommendation to lower the load posting until we do the full project in five to six years. For now, we'll get to the schedule in a little bit, but we are in the process of finalizing the load rating, and then we'll come up with recommendations initially with V-Trans, and we'll coordinate with the town if you need to do anything different with the load posting. The 12-ton may be a long shot based on our experience and what we've seen, and may not even be a need because the detour is so short and it doesn't appear like it's going to be a major headache for emergency response or for fuel delivery trucks just to go around the detour and be able to access what they need to on those houses. Next slide, please. And then as we go through the rehabilitation options, we're going to consider the cost of what we're going to recommend. We're going to recommend a fire protection and fire detection system, and it's really up to the town to make the final decision as to what do you want to do there. There's different options with those. And then as we move forward, we're going to tell you what those are and try to get your input as to what you're looking for. Lighting, we always have that. If it's a long bridge, you want to make sure that you have adequate lighting, so when you come into it, it's not dark even during the daytime hours. But that's not something that we're going to recommend here. The bridge is very short. You have the windows and you have the light coming from each end, and it may not be something that you may want to do or need it. And then also all those other things, the public safety, the environmental impacts, property impacts. We have the park, we have private property on the other side. We're going to need to coordinate with that about her to make sure we get the easements that we need to allow the contractor to do the project. Then the overall goal for tonight is just to get the public input and hear from all of you. What do you know? Share it with us, and they'll do our homework and come back on another meeting to present
So in terms of, you had asked about the scoping study. These are not, it's not an exhaustive list, but this would be the type of thing that would be in it. We would give options for, like fire protection, for example. There's protection and detection, so you can put on some coatings to protect. You can put sprinkler systems, fire detection systems. We'll recommend something and explain what they are and price all that out, and then it's up to the town to decide what they want. So that's the point of that scoping study, provide all these different options, the things we're talking about, and then get input on it. So next couple slides. So just kind of wrapping up here, so we talked a little bit about the bridge itself, some of our inspection findings. This is really more process. For traffic control, there's usually three ways we handle traffic control. We phase it, we build half the project at a time. That's not really feasible on a covered bridge. Sometimes we'll do a temporary bridge, and that would be a bridge next to the bridge. And again, that, the issue with that is you have more impacts to the environment, property, extra cost. And here, what we think seems reasonable is a bridge closure with off-site detour. It's a very short detour around there. And the last option with a bridge closure, that's the cheapest and the quickest option of all the ones we showed there. Next slide. Cultural natural resources. So I mentioned this bridge is on the National Historic Register, and so we have to follow Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. So there's, that covers building structures, archaeological, there's a lot that's looked at. We coordinate with the state Historic Preservation Officer, and really where the details get hammered out. So the state has a Historic Covered Bridge Preservation Committee, and that's a group of people from V-Trans, academics, covered bridge societies, and they'll review everything. They have guidelines as far as generally the preferences to preserve rather than replace. And so we'll make recommendations and work through the alternatives with them. And then finally, natural resources, if there's any wetlands or river impacts. So we look at cultural, natural resources. Go to next slide. Right away, we talked about that. So there is some town-owned land on one side, and then we said one or two butters. It depends kind of how long up and down the road we go. And we're just early on looking at the right of way. We don't anticipate any permanent right-of-way, permanent easements that are needed for the project, but there may be some temporary easements that are needed just to get construction access. So basically kind of getting around the bridge, there may be some temporary easement rights that we would need to pursue and work with the town. Next slide. So next steps, Joseph talked about several of these. So where we're headed next, we're getting input tonight. We're going to start looking at some of those rehabilitation alternatives and the structural analysis of the bridge. Then we'll start developing some alternatives, go to the Historic Covered Bridge Committee, present those, get their input. We'll come back here for a public input, to a public information meeting, and present those. And the town will have ahead of time the actual, the scoping report. You'll have a draft of that to review ahead of time. So it won't be like cop blind. We'll provide that ahead of time and come back. And then that's kind of in the shorter term. Longer term, we have to go through the historic NEPA process, which is through 106, complete the scoping report, and then contract plans and documents. So what's the timeline on this? It's not quick, I will say that. So if you want to go to the next slide. Scoping report, probably looking, we said summer, summer of this year until probably summer, fall. And then contract plans, which are what we put out to bid for the contractors, not until 2030. That's due to some funding changes and limitations. We'd advertise and look at construction probably in 2031 in that timeframe. Next slide. So that's basically our presentation for tonight. So again, we're looking for, you know, input from anyone, you know, butter, emergency response, bridge usage. Obviously, we don't live in town, we don't know the local concerns, that's why we have these meetings. And they're usually very helpful to us to provide information on things we're not aware of. How does the town deal with plowing the snow up and down? I imagine, I know how it goes, but hopefully you're not going over the bridge. You know, things like that, or it's a school bus route, or different things like that that we're not aware of. With that, and then the last slide, we can leave this up for now, but we do have, the slides will be available. I think the town could put those up if they'd like. And at the end, we have contact information for myself, Laura, and Brandon, if anyone has, you know, you get home and you forget something, I want to comment later, so. So with that, we threw a lot at you, but hopefully it made sense. Open up to any questions.
Has the bridge actually been accepted as a candidate for this operation? Hearing from those of that. We will, we will, we will. I thought that V-Trans, when they're on site, the bridge was asked to be a candidate for this. Has this bridge been selected? Sure?
Yeah. So this has been selected. It is in our Town Highway Bridge Program. So there is funding committed to this project. So yes, it has been selected.
How much is federal, how much is state, and how much is local in the funding?
Yeah, so typically Town Highway Bridges in our program are 80% federally funded, 10% state-funded, and 10% town-funded. There are, if we rehabilitate a bridge versus replace it, that reduces the town share by 50%. And if we keep the bridge closed during construction instead of constructing a temporary bridge, that reduces it an additional 50%. And so under those scenarios, it would be a 2.5% town share, 17.5 state share, and 80% federal share.
And it's just a matter of what, 2.5% of what?
Yeah, and in our next presentation, we should have, we should have numbers associated with that.
My name's Ken, and I spoke with you a couple of days ago. One of the members, one of the member's group that moved it in 1986. So I'm interested to hear whether Almond, which is still intact, you know, we're the ones that painted this stuff. We put the roof on, we put the door in, we put the buttons up. Will we have some input on whether you put in epoxy or epoxy胶?
Yeah, absolutely. So as far as like hierarchy, what is, V-Trans is a project that we're consulting on. And then Laura would be coordinating with the town, so if any comments flow through the town, yeah, any information you have on the past and how it got there and what you've done would be really helpful.
I'm more interested in what's forward.
Always forward, yeah.
Yeah, history is history. But I'm interested to know if we can be included in the decision-making process as one of the interested parties.
Would the town be okay with us including their group in discussions with the Historic Covered Bridge Committee?
I had that as one of my, right along your lines, Ken. Splicing versus replacement. And what I was going to ask for was the scoping to give us the two options of actually removing things and putting new in as opposed to doing what Ken's doing. And that may, I don't know, work 2.5%. That might not be that much of a driver for us, because I would certainly be leaning more towards replacement if it's feasible. There might be some places it's not, and I also have no problem with that organization being involved with input on this.
Yeah, just as far as the replacement piece, so we mentioned this Historic Covered Bridge Committee, they have a set of guidelines we follow, it's kind of hierarchy of needs. So the first is repair. Then if you have to replace, it's replace a piece of it, you know, splice something in. Then if you have to replace, it's with the same size, hopefully the same species. And then later on, you can go in something like Lulam or something like that. I don't anticipate, I think Joseph mentioned, 12 tons would be pretty high for this bridge if you're looking at a lot of replacement. We can show you what that looks like and the cost. I guess you're probably not going to go with that. So at a five-ton rating, you'd be looking more at splicing some of the members. And I think some of that was done in 86, like on the end post. Instead of replacing the whole member, there was a splice in the bottom.
I recall at the time that there was quite a, there was a evaluation of lowering of the weight from the weight rating because of the condition at the time.
Can we give him a microphone?
Oh, yeah. So there was a substantial lowering of the weight rate back in 1986.
Not a lot has changed, as far as I know, since 1986. Things have been chewed a little more, but not a lot. What was, what would this bridge have been rated, brand-new, and how far is it going to go before it's in trouble?
I think there's some locations towards the, you know, unfortunately where most of the damages is at the end, and that's where you have the highest forces, right? All the loads going down. Probably brand-new, pristine, you're looking maybe 10 tons at the most.
Yeah, I would say the same. So the non-big picture that we need to remember is that you probably don't have a need to bring it all the way up to 12 tons. There's no need. We have another detour, very short, less than a mile, that fuel trucks and emergency responders will come in. So very unlikely that we can get it all the way up to 12 tons within reason to replace, without replacing a lot of members. So we see a lot of splicing, we see some replacements where more kids, there's the one diagonal on the very end that's been all chewed up on the bottom, and then it's shifted, that shoulder inch, that vertical, so that one is here replaced. We're going to make all those recommendations to what we think is needed, and then that Historic Covered Bridge Committee is going to be where we decide how we move forward. Some representation from the town would be great to be at that meeting and chime in and provide a feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Is it probably better, Laura, we could maybe have another coordination meeting prior to the Historic Covered Bridge Committee meeting with the town to make sure we're on the same page? That way we expedite that meeting with Historic Covered Bridge Committee. That way it goes a bit smoother. That way we, we in the town and V-Trans, we get our heads together, we agree what needs to get done, and we present that to the Historic Covered Bridge Committee. And maybe go a bit better.
Yeah, and typically, we showed, and I know the picture wasn't great, we showed the old plan, you've probably seen the old plan if you were involved with it. So we would, what we do in the study, excuse me, we show something like that, and then we'll darken certain members to show the amount of replacement. So you can see like, oh, here's 5 tons, here's 12 tons. It's going to be a marked difference. Again, I'm not speaking for the town, but I think 5 is probably where you're going to be happiest and it's going to be the least amount, you know, change to the bridge.
Just one quick comment. We do want everybody to have input on this if they have a desire to. One request would be to email, send an email to the town or myself. That way everything's going through us to get to them. That would be very helpful. And if you have any questions going forward or throughout this process, you can email me at the Highway Garage or email the office, and they'll get the questions to these folks, if that's okay? Thank you.
I would just say, I was on the committee with Ken when the bridge was relocated. I think it's crazy to think of it as a 12-ton bridge, and I would suggest you guys don't put too much energy into specking that out, because the town's not going to want to pay for it, and the town doesn't need it because of the other accesses. So making a five or six-ton bridge seems like the smart thing to develop a plan for.
Yeah, understood, thank you.
Just to support your comment, Willis, you know, the local fire department, they can't come across it. All the local fuel companies know they can't come across it. School buses, they won't come across it. I agree with Willis, there's absolutely no need to elevate this to a weight limit of that height. And just to also add to the uses of the bridge, I use it twice a day. I've interrupted several weddings on a yearly basis. A lot happens. And as the neighborhood, and I'll testify we do it correctly, we've shut down the road, and we have at least three or four picnics, barbecues on the bridge on a yearly basis. So it's pretty important, it gets a lot of use.
Did you catch the garter?
I'm sorry?
Did you catch the garter?
No, I did not. I backed up and left.
Maybe evaluating the live loads of 150 people dancing.
It's not that big a neighborhood.
150 people and a porcupine.
Or two.
Do you, and do you have any more feedback on the animal? Is it any albatross animal or a porcupine? Or I don't know if anyone else has any more information. Locked in here, anything you have? Lots to hear, anything you have.
I personally would be more than glad to sit up the camera. I've got a few, I've got work there, Christ, there is muscle. I'll let you know.
We were there just before we got here, and we could see some, some foot march, and it looked like there was also some, kind of a, like a trail within, going back and forth, and back and rid, and out, it's some kind of animal, we didn't spot it by, but.
Yeah, there were tracks, kinda looked like, I'm, I'm not an expert, like a tail, like, could've been an opossum or, or something like that. I guess it.
Definitely active, but. As a note, if anybody sees any fresh shoes, please call the Highway Department. I do have, uh, garlic and hot pepper spray, it seems to work pretty good.
There's quite a few that we, that we.
Okay. I can get over there, I can get over there and store some more stuff on it. They don't like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any more questions for these people?
I guess I have one.
I just, I'm one, um, loving to call about a covered bridge, which, I was just gonna ask, uh, you said that you have, uh, Hull Tanner has a, a biological consultant. I was just curious if we'd connected with A and R and all yet on any of this as well.
No, not at this point.
I have a couple contacts over there, and I might just reach out to, to them if you don't mind or connect with you and them.
Yeah, I think, um, I think the comment about everything should go through the town, but, um, you know, yeah, I, I don't object to it for sure.
There are lots of pets around, and the committee has, um, considered lots of ways, but usually, um, controlled by the fact that there are pets all around, so watch it.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yes, uh, wondering if you have any information on side loading. Five years ago this spring, we had a fairly devastating wind come through here, took down a lot of trees, including one of mine that blocked one-thirty-one in both directions for a while, um, seventy miles an hour or so. They said, do you know if that bridge would take a seventy mile an hour bridge? This weather's getting worse these days, not better.
Yeah, that's part of the work, that's what we're looking at, and what I mentioned earlier, I don't like the fact that we don't have the X braces, we only have the knee braces. We, we need to look into that and make a recommendation as to what needs to get done. The beauty of that, that X brace, you know, we probably don't recommend, is that it's reversible, and the store people love that, because you could take it out at any time if it doesn't need their requirement. So, something that could easily get added without a whole lot of cost, and it's gonna keep the bridge square without having any racking. There's some sweet, there's some racking on the bridge, it's not quite straight on one corner, it's going in one direction, and then the other corner is going the opposite direction. So, we definitely need to straighten some of that and then lock it in place, so it doesn't move. But the wind load is a major, major force that we need to, actually, we need to capture that.
You know, what you've mentioned is internal.
Hang, hang, hang on a sec. Uh, you can have the floor right back, Kelly, if I may. Um, please remember to get to a microphone, and it's not so much for the people in this room as it is the people that are online. Uh, our voices don't get picked up if we're that far away from a microphone. Brandon, could, could you? Thank, thank you.
Well, now that they've got a mic, I guess I'm done.
Can you sing?
That would clear the room, yes, if I tried to sing. Um, yeah, I'm just worried with the, some of the split beams that you showed in your pictures, that looked pretty severe to me, it almost looked like the piece of wood was in two portions. So, um, we've had five years with no real significant winds, but, uh, I, I just feel we're due, and, uh, I'd hate for the thing to blow over, um, blow down. But, um, yeah, I'd be interested in what you come up with as far as a figure, what can that bridge withstand broadside, and what do the meteorologists say we can sus, we can expect between now and twenty thirty?
Yeah, the wind speed that we're looking at is in much more than seventy-five miles an hour, I believe it's around one-twenty or so, the gusts.
Wow.
It's, the, the, the wind forces are determined by design codes and using design codes, and you know, it's more conservative than what you see, but you're right, the, the weather is changing all the time.
I'm not sure how relevant this is, but when you talk about extracting salt, will you be using existing cracks in the beams, or will you be drilling into the structure itself?
We're gonna look into that, we don't know if that's gonna be successful. I know that if we have concrete elements, that's, that's always an option, to put N nodes and address the salt that way. We, we haven't dealt with this situation in the past, but that's something that we need to do our research and look more into that. Make some phone calls and reach out to some experts and see if we get some answers. It may be unlikely that we may be able to do that. I would just brainstorm in what I said earlier.
Okay. I think we're all set.
All right, so just one last thing, just wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. We, this really is helpful. Appreciate the butters, people that were involved in, in the past coming in, and definitely looking forward to working with everybody, so appreciate the input.
Thanks. If you find your answer on the other.
Yeah.
Okay. And we're gonna go back to the, uh, DRB members?
Yep.
What'd you do, Dave?
Just let everybody clear.
No.
I guess you didn't hear me.
Cleared it right out.
Kick the porch behind you.
All right, so as for the DRB, uh, the legislative body determines the terms. Um, it's right here in statute, section B. Uh, so two years is, is fine. It could be three, or it could be one.
I guess the motion's still on the floor. Do you, any more discussion on this? Do we wanna keep it two, or, yep?
It's fine.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the resolution of the Town Weathersfield Select Board for the DRB? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Yes, it carries.
And we will have the printed copy for the select board to sign at the next select board meeting.
Now, we're on to the municipal code ethics discussion. Back to you, Brandon.
Yeah. Um, does the board have any questions on this?
I had a question.
Yep.
On, on the first page. Oh, sorry. Um, on the first page, number three, the actions that the board needs to take, take are, number three says, assign a proposed code of ethics investigation and enforcement ordinance to the ordinance committee. What is an ordinance committee?
That's the state ordinance committee. So, we would be basically, um, appointing.
Is this a liaison to the Ethics Commission?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't read it that way. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, this, this is an ordinance, um, i- is it like policy? Is this a three-read?
Yes, we should, we should have three readings on the ordinance. The most, uh, time, we do need to appoint an employee, um, to serve as the ethics liaison to the State Ethics Commission. I would recommend that the select board takes action on that tonight.
Do you have a recommendation on who that should be?
It could either be Suzanne or I. I have not talked to Suzanne about being the liaison yet, though. Um, so if it's Suzanne, now, if you appoint me, I could appoint her, if she agrees.
Is there a need for an alternate on that? Both could do it, or just one person?
I, I think that's fine to have, yeah, I, I think an alternate's fine. I don't see why I wouldn't be.
I have another question. Go ahead. Um, on the second page, under initials, ethics training requirement, the first two bullets have, um, asterisks next to specified officers and new officers, but I don't know where that asterisk refers to. Is it to a definition, or there's no, there's nothing to go with it? Or is that a typo?
So, I don't believe the asterisks, I, I think the asterisk's being used to emphasize.
I don't understand.
Um, required, like, the requirement to specify officers to complete State Ethics Commission training.
Can that just be removed?
It can.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't, it's just a memo.
Um, and on number, on the, on the first page again, it refers to a, a link in the upper left, is there, um, is there supposed to be a link in there?
Sorry, where are you, uh?
I'm on the first page. Sorry. Under additional information, number one. Does upper left, was that upper left? So, this is just a discussion, it isn't intended to be anything more than that, then? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, this is a memo from our offices to the select board.
Okay.
Um, so if you go to the State of Vermont Ethics Commission's website, on the upper left-hand corner, that's where you'll find the Municipal Code of Ethics. However, we provided the code of ethics within the packet as well.
Gotcha.
So, it's the same code of ethics that you see in, in your packet.
Thank you.
So, we need to point, appoint a liaison at this point? Is that what we need to do? Anyone wanna make a recommendation, or?
It, it sounds like the recommendation is for Brandon to be that position at this time. And if, and possibly, with what Ray said, if Suzanne is interested, she could be the alternate, and then whoever's available can, you know, either you can assign her to do it, or whatever.
Are you making that motion, Mike?
Uh, yes.
And, Mike, when you make that motion, could you just do Mia as the liaison with Suzanne as the alternate?
So moved.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, Brandon, my understanding, that's how other towns do it, right? Is they have their town manager as the liaison.
Yes, Jeff Nobis is the liaison in Springfield, for example.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Carries. Do we need to do anything else with this right now?
I think that's fine for right now. I'm gonna be reaching out to everyone that needs to take the training and get that scheduled. I, one person in the town outside of the administration has taken the training.
Did it this morning.
Did you?
We talked about the online version of the conflict of interest.
Yes, I did not get confirmation that you did it.
I sent it to Suzanne.
I see, okay.
Are we supposed to get a certificate or something, or proof that we've done it? 'Cause I printed out the submitter form.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's it.
Yeah, I, I did receive Ellen Clattenberg's, automatically came to me. Um, so I wonder why it didn't for you.
I don't know, I don't have a username for VLCT login either.
Okay.
So, something's fallen off there.
That's good to know.
I did have a question on the conflict of interest policy, not the memo, if, if we're taking questions.
Okay.
On page three, under section nineteen ninety-two, conflicts of interest, um, recusal, about the middle of that paragraph, it says, as defined by section twelve oh one of this title. And I don't know where twelve oh one is. Is that in another part of the statute, or?
Was, was this title, was this title twenty-four? Didn't I see that somewhere else in here?
Twenty-two, uh, section twenty-two, twenty-four, VSA, chapter sixteen.
Yeah, that, that's a good question. What, you know, twelve oh one of what title?
I will look into that, and I will email you.
Okay.
Move on?
Yeah.
Okay. Next subject, Wallwood Orchard Road discussion. I think that's you, Ray.
So, um, Wallwood Orchard Road, there are several different groups of people that have different opinions on the road, and at the last meeting, I never really got a direction as to who it was and which group of topics we were discussing. So, I think maybe we need to open it up to the public and let them.
Is he here?
Voice their opinions and ask their concerns. Um, I might not have all the answers tonight, I can't, I, I don't have all the answers, obviously, I'm not that person. But I'd like to listen to all your concerns and, and, you know, what's.
I think it's Mr. Snide right here that needs to speak.
Yeah, I, well, I know.
Okay.
Just, so you know, it's a stretch of road, there's many residents.
Yeah.
In that area, and, and several different opinions on.
Well, I had to come to a conclusion as to where he lived, so, he sent me an email, but I didn't even know where he lived.
I would address that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna assume anything, I just wanna hear, and let everybody know that we're just gonna, uh, listen and take notes and try to do our best to answer whatever I can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Snide, would you like to?
Yeah, I'm not very good at this, so bear with me. Matt Snide, I live on Wallwood Orchard Road. Um, concern is how much they're building up the road. Um, there's been a lot of issues with drainage, ditching, um, as I should say, cesspools in driveways, um, hard to get in and out of driveways. But the, the main thing is, um, the road itself. And it's been going on for, they've been building it up since thirty-five years, and it's been an ongoing issue for thirty-five years. People have complained in the past, it didn't get anywhere. Um, people that have lived on the road, it just kinda got blown to the side, nobody listened, whatever the case may be, but I didn't, I wasn't in on any of that meeting. So, I don't, I don't know the whole story about that. But anyway, um, I was told we need a, some kind of grant, um, to be able to do something with the road, 'cause it was gonna cost too much money. That from Ray, town manager, Brandon. Um, this, this is why I'm here, uh, hopefully somebody can do something, um, take care of this issue, um, sooner than later. It's getting to be where, like I said, a cesspool of water in my driveway, um, had a beautiful stone wall in front of my house, I can't even see it anymore, uh, maybe one stone out of four-and-a-half feet. Um, it's just, it's been a, it's just, um, just a horrible thing. I mean, um, I said I'm not good at these, so, it's starting to create issues with septic's. Um, years ago, from the, from the road to septic's was a certain distance, certain feet. I did a little research on that through the state, um, again, very, they're, they're basically getting on top of my septic, um, at this point. I had mentioned to Ray at one point in time, I said, you can't go any further onto my lawn. He wanted to scoop in about four feet for some kind of ditching or draining, I don't know what it was. Um, I told him we couldn't do that. I said, we'd end up having some big problems with that, because you can't, you can't get into people's septic's, you know, there's, like I said, there's state laws. Um, I'm ten feet from my, my leach field to the road, it's exactly ten feet, and that's what it needs to be. So, if he rides the road anymore, my leach field is gonna start leaking, and that's gonna be a big issue. That's what my concerns are, too, you know, my, my biggest concerns is. And then my water, um, back in eighty, the wall was built in eighty-seven, eighty-eight, my brother built it. Like I said, it was four-and-a-half feet high, um, a certain distance from the wall, you know, in the road, to my well water. Um, I don't want my well water or my septic messed with, I mean, I don't, you know what I mean? There's, there's laws there, um, I don't know how to else word it, uh, but, uh, it's an ongoing issue, and it, it really does, it needs to be addressed sooner than later. Whether the funds, I don't know, but, like I said. Whether the funds, I don't know, but, like I said, I got, I have, I have pictures, I have whatever else, but I have dimensions, whatever you need, but it's not just me, there's other people on my road that have issues. Water issues with their lawn from the water runoff from the road because it's so high, load after load of gravel are being wasted, a lot of taxpayers' money is being wasted because of gravel, unnecessary dumping of gravel, um, throughout the years, there's no need of it. Because of mud, shut the road down, close the road down, just let the people live on it, you know, um, drive on the road. That road is one of the most traveled dirt roads in Weathersfield, and I'll put money on it. Weathers, Wellwood Orchard Road is a bypass from North Springfield, Chester, wherever on that side of town, and they come right straight through, go to Clamont, wherever. Back years ago, it was a big route for, um, the factories, I figured it'd get better, it didn't get any better, the traffic's getting worse and worse, you got the orchard, it happens every year, more and more, out of staters, everybody's using the road. Ray will shut the road down at point in times, use it a little later than he should, but he does, cause he, you know, probably tired of having to spend all his time driving up and down the road and see how things are, waste of money, waste of time, but, I don't know, um, I don't know where else to go, I was told to go to you, I went to Ray, I went to Brandon, and I'm coming to you guys. I don't know where else to go next, other than have a lot of problems at my home, and a lot of other poor people that live on the road. They shouldn't have to deal with that, you shouldn't have to deal with beautiful summer days going out mowing water because of the town road.
My driveway used to be level with the road, now I back down into my driveway, my plow and my truck drags.
Sorry, I just, if you could just use the microphone for people to, and like, say your name, sorry.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not gonna go on too much about somebody else's stuff, but my biggest concern is me, but, that's about all I have to say, other than, I need help.
Before you leave, from that, from that picture, where's your property from that picture? I just wanna know where you are. Are you further up the road?
No. I'm right here, this house right here.
On the left?
Right behind that tree?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, I, yeah, I know where you're at.
Okay.
I, I know where you're at. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Ronald Snide, and the, the road on Wellwood Orchard Road has been built up so much in the last fifteen years, that when I back into my driveway now, my plow truck, the plow drags, getting in and out of the driveway, I have to literally put my truck in four-wheel drive to come up out of my driveway. You back down into my driveway, the driveway used to be even with my driveway, up the road, now the, you look out across the hood of my truck, and at the center of the road is level, the hood of my truck, been built up way too much, and it needs to be fixed.
Um, just wanted to say hi, I'm Virginia Snide, I'm Ron's wife, um, just kinda to get an idea, so, when he talks about, um, his plow dragging, I drive a Subaru, right now, it's a Crosstrek, ninety-five percent of the time, so I back in, when I go to pull out, my, um, warning comes on that there's an object in front of me, that's in my own driveway. Another point that I did wanted to bring back, and I do have pictures on my phone, but they just don't look normal, so as you head from my home, it's a trailer that's on the left, you go towards Reservoir Road, and my lawn has been slowly taken away. Now, I completely understand and know that so much of the road, um, belongs to the town, if I'm so wrong, please help me, the road's just getting wider and wider, and I've literally lost, I would guess, somewhere between five and ten feet of my lawn, from the road, just getting wider and wider and wider.
That's, excuse me, that's the whole road where people live, it's the whole thing?
Yeah.
Crazy, why, sorry?
No, it's okay, um, I don't think I got a very good picture, but last week, I, I just went out, took a few pictures of the road, said, "Please do not drive on this road if you don't live on it," and it, it wasn't trying to slam or do anything, it was trying to be very supportive, one, to my neighbors, myself, but also to people, like, "You're gonna ruin your vehicles, people, if you drive this." And I, and I apologize, I didn't get the best views, but there was a car coming from the Reservoir Road end, that literally drove out on my lawn, where actually the lower drive to avoid the road. So, and I know, like, it's been a problem, um, a few years, and then it was like it got better for a little bit, but now it feels like it's just creeping up, you know, I don't wanna have to build my driveway up so that my car doesn't tell me there's an object in front of me, um, I don't know what the exact answer is, and whatever I can do to find an answer or to support something, please let me know, I'll do what I can. Thank you for listening, I appreciate you.
So, I'm, I'm not that familiar, I, I'm one of those people that doesn't use Wellwood Orchard Road very often, I guess, um, what is the core problem, is this a road that gets really muddy, or is that what the issue is?
Yes.
I see.
One of the issues.
I, I think the other part of the core issue is, is the, what they're, what they're stating is, over, over time, to deal with the, um, mud issue, gravel, stone, et cetera, has continually been dumped on the road, and the level of the road has continued to go up.
Well, that's, that's what I was trying to understand, why is the road being-
I, I would be surprised if, it just, if you look at these tables, I, cause I've gone up there enough, I haven't been up there in a while, but I've been by there enough, that down into the level part of their driveway is probably equal from, from the center of the road from this, like he said, he says, center of his truck, it, it literally just goes, puff, like this, down into their, into their flat part of their driveways.
Well, when I was a kid, I remember riding my bike, and, uh, I could actually ride my bike up the road, I wouldn't trust a boy to ride a bike on that road the way they do today with the traffic, too, um, like, that's besides the point, but yes, it keeps, it needs to be brought down, it needs to be redone the correct way, meaning, the right underlinement, whatever, whatever they gotta do to bring that road down, I don't even care if it's hard, asphalt, I don't care, but at this point in time, it's just way too high, I mean, everything is, I mean, you, we've gotta raise our nailboxes for goodness sakes, I mean, why, you know, or it's too high, or it's too low, it's just, it's one thing after another, it's, yeah.
But, but I, I think what brought us here was good intention, in, in general, trying to keep the road passable, you know, and-
And I agree with that, but I've also seen when they grade them in the summertime, why are we hauling gravel into that road in the middle of the summer?
Well, he would have to answer that question.
Well, this has been going on way before Ray too.
Yep. Oh, oh, I, oh, I know, I know, yeah, yeah. Oh, no, 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 I know.
Ray's doing the best he can, he's, he's doing what he's supposed to be doing-
Yes.
-to a certain extent of trying to make it passable.
And we gotta figure out a way to fix what's, what's happened now, is where we're at.
He did give you the estimate a few years back, I think Ray had mentioned some numbers, um, to Brandon and myself when we had a meeting, um, I, I don't know, all I heard was it's over a million dollars, the, the, in a certain section of the road, where the worst part is, um, to dig it up, put the stone down, put a filter fabric down, put a layer of whatever else on top, and call it done, and ditch it and drain it, so it's drainage and ditching is a factor. The road can't, the road can't breathe, I mean, you can't drain, what's it gonna do? It's gonna puddle up, plain and simple, I mean, I'm not-
Ray, can you bring something back to us in the near future?
You, you wanna talk to us, Ray? Ray wants to talk to us.
Um, so, when I first took over as Highway Superintendent, I met with Matt, and, uh, we discussed this, we've discussed this every year, for the last five years now, um, I really try to limit how much material we put on there for mud, but I also have to keep into account that people that live there also wanna get out. The issue is, the road was built in a swamp, it was not built properly, and this is a perfect example of trying to build a road from the top down, it doesn't work. All, that whole area is wet, and there's drainage issues. The, the ideal situation is to design the road properly and have it built correctly, get the right elevation, get the right drainage, that takes a lot of money to have that designed done, you can't, um, just tear a road apart and hope you're solving it with the money you're spending, I don't, I don't feel comfortable spending taxpayers' dollars hoping I fix it right, uh, my goal would be to hire somebody to come in, and they tell you where the groundwater is, they tell you where the ledge is, they tell you the soils, they do core samples, and come up with a comprehensive plan to fix the road properly. In the meantime, I do not believe we've been putting any material in the summertime in your houses, it's all going up on the hill-
To the road.
Yes, and that is because we're trying to switch over to share pack, and the gravel we've used in the past, just lets go, and all gets washboarded, so, we have to put, we do have to put, maintain the road.
And I get that, and you're, you're hauling in gravel and stuff in the springtime of the year, if you need gravel up there, why aren't they dropping that grader blade and pulling it from, in front of my driveway where it's so four feet deep, up that road where they needed it up there in the summertime, cause you're gonna bring more in anyhow.
So instead of just having a person grade the road, add material, one truck, now I need a loader, several trucks, I gotta, I gotta cut, cut the road down.
I'm probably gonna suggest we're not gonna solve this right at this moment, but it, so a couple of questions I have is kinda where is this situation when you're looking at the whole town in general, right, there's a lot of muddy roads, um, and I have heard about this one before, so where is this on sort of, uh, I mean, cause you have to balance cost, you have to balance the size of the pro, the problem, right? When, so when you're thinking about major issues around town with roads, where, where is, does this situation sort of land in that planning process? Cause I agree, right, uh, you, if you're gonna fix it, you should do it right.
So, if I had a magic wand, I would've fixed this five years ago, because, um, right now I have two trucks with broken leaf springs from going out through mud, and trying to fix mud holes, it's, it's not fun, it's not good for anybody that lives there, or anybody traveling through. That being said, I have been focused on meeting Act sixty-four standards on road segments, which is a law, and you have to do the, the highest, um, ranking roads first, and they don't, they don't consider mud.
What do you mean by highest ranking, is that?
They rank all the segments of road and prioritize which road you need to do first. So it's the steeper, directly in the streams, the steeper hills, um, that's where the money is. So I've applied for four different grants, or five different grants, and been denied every time because this does not meet their criteria, criteria for a project, so if we want to get this done, we are going to need to invest money, the townspeople are gonna want, are going to have to want to invest money into fixing the problem. I, I can put it in my budget, um, and see, you know, it's gonna raise. Ultimately, we would have a, a plan to address all the mud in town, and it would be wonderful to be able to do that. I've been focused on capital plans for equipment, I've been focused on trying to get the pay straightened out at the Highway Department, that's, that's something that we need to do so we don't lose people, um, I've been focused on making, making all the, the money I have right now is to maintain the roads to the best we can, and follow the law, and do what we need to, to accomplish that. If we want to start a program where we are, be building roads based on mud, we need to develop a whole plan, and this road would be one of the highest priorities. You can always make a policy, right now I put signs up, one of my signs is gone, it, it disappeared, um, but I can put the signs up asking people not to ride on it, but if I have no policy backing it up, this is a Band-Aid, if the board wants to make a policy that says in the springtime, I can post the road and make it so people can't drive on it, and there's a fine, maybe, if, somehow, to have some teeth, um, that's an option, that would definitely help the problem, um, it wouldn't solve the problem, the root cause of the problem is a bad, bad road. Also, to talk about the water on your lawn, unfortunately, even if we lower that road and put in the drainage, the road's going to be higher than the surrounding area, cause that's how you drain a road, so it, it's not gonna get rid of the water, it's, it's a very wet area.
It is.
That's, and I'm not an engineer, there's underdrain, there's curtain drains, you, there's a lot of options to fix this, but we have to have a commitment, and the problem I'm running into is, people in the town right now are really passionate about it, in a month, they're gonna be really passionate about dust, less later, they're gonna be really passionate about brush. To get, to get enough people in the community to agree that this is important, and they're willing to spend the money on it, is going to be hard, I can develop a comprehensive plan, um, the board can adopt that plan and say, "We really wanna go on this route," but eventually it has to go to the taxpayers, I can guarantee you, there's gonna be people saying, "You buy the wrong car, you should do this, you should do that," it's only mud, it's, it's a rite of passage, you shouldn't live there, it, it's hard, and it's, you guys know that, I mean, as soon as the mud's gone, they forget about it.
I mean, I, I thought about putting a new mobile home in there, there's no way you can even get that one out of there without rolling it over coming up on that road.
And, and right now, you have, um, up further, there's, there's fiber optic lines under the road now, the culverts are now built up, so they're higher than where they were before, so it, it, there's a lot to it, it, it's, I would love, I would love to solve this problem as much as anybody else, but my first go-to is grants, you guys know that, I try to get grants to solve a problem and not raise taxes, when it gets to the point where we have to, have to invest the money, or there's a willingness to invest the money to fix this problem, we can't fix this one, so what's that set for precedent, is, the people on Baltimore Road, we're gonna have to get together and complain, we get our road fixed, we need to come up with a, a way to score the problem, and say, "This is our priority list based on that," the same as I did with paving, every road is scored, and you prioritize what you do based on, it's not my decision, it's all based on a scoring card, so we can score all these mud hole-
When you're done, I wanna discuss-
So we can score all these mud holes, and put 'em on a priority list, and set up a separate way to pay for it and, and do it, but I, I, it's, it's hard to do it with the current budget, we are a highway maintenance department, not a highway building or rehabilitating department, we can maintain what we have, we can't rebuild something, you're gonna have contractors and everything.
And grants, are those state or federal grants to be the part?
Both.
And, and what, all of the models?
Uh, the design's gonna be anywhere from twenty to forty, depending on what they gotta do for core samples and figure it out, everybody doesn't, and that's the hard part, is people don't understand, I could just dig the road up and put some fabric down and hope it works, but I really have a hard time with spending thousands of dollars guessing, I, I don't-
Are you talking about the whole road, or, I go over there quite a bit because my son Hudson lives with Matt Vicki, so I, unfortunately, took a little of that, but are you talking about all of Wellwood, or it seems to me the worst part is from where, um, the Matt Vicki's house going up to, um, bottom of the hill?
Brandon?
So all the, all the research, all the things I've been focusing on is from the reservoir, the road that goes to the Springfield Reservoir- -down to your father's old driveway.
Yes.
Now, that is a section of the town, another issue I'm having is the road that went down through there has changed course, and now it's hitting the side of the road and it's washing it down right across from your house.
Right.
That's another thing I've been trying to, to get figured out.
Can we, can I come up with a, a little bit of a suggestion here? I asked for maybe a temporary fix, the last two, last meeting I had with Ray, Brandon, I said, "How about a, at first I thought it was a go, but I just went south, was, maybe, everybody on the road, some were happy, until we get a grant, or until we can actually do something, which is, take some of the road down, stupid truck, get it out of there, bring a little township, plenty of room over there, um, get it down, do some ditching, gotta work for a while, it didn't, at one point in time, not dig it up, but just ditching did a lot of good, now a lot of the ditches are full, because you're spreading the road out, because you're going wider, so it can rain, so that's why the road is getting wider, that's why it's not raining, one of the reasons is because the road, there's no ditch- So that's why the road is getting wider. That's why it's not raining. One of the reasons is because the road, there's no ditch. A few years back, they did a ditch up the road and it's full. It went down four or five feet. Beautiful ditching. It is full. That's why Ron's driveway, his lawn is a cesspool. Sorry, Ray. No pun intended here. It hasn't always been wet. And another thing is, yes, it's swampy. Across the road from me, there's a flat spot. There's a hill above me. There's a hill that goes down below me. That's a flat spot. Everything runs downhill. And it settles there and it builds up there. A few years back, there was a couple of cattails that came up. God forbid, it's wet there. Don't touch it! That's what I was told. God's honest truth. I said, whoa, what's the matter? Oh, we can't do anything to it. Well, what about everything else? What, what about washing driveways? And what about all the ditching? What about the road? Can't do nothing. Leave it alone. So that is an issue with the state. I had the state over there. A lot of men ensued some ties and it went south. All I'm asking is to break the road down a couple of feet and do a little ditching. Everybody would be pretty happy until we got some money. It would take Ray three or four days. He admitted to that.
So I think at this, at this point, from my perspective, right, because we're not gonna tell Ray how to do this, is ask Ray to come back to us with some options. I do agree that I'm nervous about, right, creating, creating a precedent where every mud hole, you know, you know, Perkins Hill. It's really fun to sit my kids down in my car. Everybody with a mud hole outside is here, right? Because it's a problem this season, right? So I do think we need a more strategic plan on addressing the kind of bigger problem. You've already said this is, this is one of the bigger mud holes. I agree, it's dumb to drive that road right now. I don't know why people do, but unless you have to. So I, I do think, you know, it makes sense for you and your role to, to come up with a sort of a plan on where are the big issues in town? How would we move forward with addressing these kinds of situations?
At every, every spot, sorry.
When you said, like, priority range, I just wanna be able to understand it. So in that priority, priority range for roads in need, is it tar and then dirt? Or the gravel underneath it? Or how does that work?
I was referring just to how to, how to grade the places where there's mud and how to score it so you know which one's your priority. It has nothing to do with tar.
Oh, no. I was just saying that with your budget, having to repair roads and things like that...
If I have to rehabilitate a road, we're gonna start that program, if we're gonna do that, then I would come up with a way to assess each area and then grade them. And according to the score, then that's your priority. Be it traffic, location, dead ends, you know, what it is.
Right. And I was just wondering if the tar roads take a priority?
No. This is a totally different, it'd be all focused on gravel and mud, if that's what the town wants to do.
Ray, Brendan may know this. Micah probably knows this. They're, they're gonna, they're talking about taking down the Springfield Reservoir Dam. And they're talking about taking gazillions of loads out of there. And that will be like heavy traffic on going through where Matt lives and going, going down there. I wonder if in the cost of that dam removal project, there would be funding for fixing the road because that... If we could tag onto that somehow and make the road better and get some funding because of the damage that's gonna be done to that road with...
The only problem would be they would add material and grade it. So, that, that's already had that discussion.
You have, okay, yeah.
They would fix ruts or anything that they damage. And that, the problem, I would be afraid that they would add material and that would not help us at all. So it, it is something that we can talk to. They're not gonna tear the road down and rebuild the structure of the road. They're just gonna fix, if they do a lot of washboards or where they turn it out of the reservoir itself to go down the road and they make a big real rut, they would fix that.
When is this ranked?
I don't know. It's supposed to happen, start two years ago and they keep postponing it, so.
Okay, okay.
But it's, it's like a big, big number of loads that they're talking about.
Springfield is supposed to have a big hearing where everybody went and had, it's like we had tonight for the scoping. Same thing for that project. But I haven't heard anything. I'll let you guys...
This is the first I've heard of it.
Yeah. Well, I'm surprised because they, there's a permit on the tree. There was a, there was a, there was a permit for doing the work on the pine tree at that gate.
Oh, no kidding.
Two hours ago. So they're supposed to reach out to all the residents and have a public hearing and it's a Springfield, it's Springfield's property.
It sounds to me like one of the things that, it won't obviously solve the problem, but it might help at this time of year when things get muddy, is we need to be able to authorize Ray to post it and say, sorry, no through traffic for this period of time. Because I, I saw some photographs on, I guess it must've been on Facebook the other day and I thought, oh my god, you know? It's bad enough just if the locals have to use it. I'm sure it gets torn up plenty. But if that's, I, I was never aware that that was a major, you know, through, cut through there. And it seems at, by all means, let's get, just reduce the amount of use on it.
We have several roads in town that become our major artery that people, they get stuck and you're like, this is my shortcut. And you feel like just saying you're not saving much time today, are you? They, they don't, they don't do it on their own. Another thing, I really appreciate the posting, but the negative side of that is I've had issues. People see it on Facebook and at two o'clock in the morning, they go jeeping up there.
Oh, you're kidding. Gosh.
How you do?
You have to be careful.
Bad.
Wow. Oh, good lord.
About two, one, two o'clock in the morning, they'll take you right out of bed.
Boy, there are no limits, are there?
No limits to stupidity, I think, no. So if you folks want me to work on this, it's gonna take me a while to come up with that hole. I can flush it out. The problem is, I can't say each hole's gonna take X amount of dollars because you have to do the study. You have to get in here and find out what the problem is. There's some places where I've fixed where we just, we're ditching and we hammered out ledge because we had the hammer there. And it solved like the big hummock type problems. Most of it's water. It's all water. It's all drainage. It, every place is different.
And it probably varies from year to year with how much moisture there is and how deep a freeze we have.
Then it didn't do so good.
Got Mike down on the end?
I, I wrote down mud holes and I listed three of them. I, I think Perkins Hill is one, Baltimore Road probably still has some. And Wellwood Orchards. And I'm sure there's more than that that you're aware of.
Golden Ridge, Bowen Hill, Skyline Drive, Perkins Hill, Wellwood Orchards, Butterfield, Baltimore Road, Cory Road, Thrasher Road.
My reason for going there was your, your earlier comment about be careful about opening up this can of worms. But now I'm really gonna open it up. Sorry.
Brendan's like, don't do it!
We had a windfall of funds from FEMA. Is it possible to take some funds from that to use for, in place of grants that we're struggling to get ahold of? Just, you know, fishing here.
So I, I think we can, we can look at options for those funds. The last time we talked, we were discussing potentially using it to give us a jumpstart on our capital plan. So we can look at that as another option and then evaluate and assess which, which one will give us the biggest thing for our book.
I, I was, I was gonna go in another place and that was, how old, how old is this road? When did this road get put in? Way before the trailers were there, right?
It was an old farm.
Wellwood Orchard Road?
Yeah.
My house is one of the first ones in Weathersdale. I'll put money on it. That was late 1700s, 1780s.
I don't think it was a horse and buggy, horse and buggy trailer.
Okay. But I don't wanna get to...
I don't think it went all the way. It's not like it is now. But once the reservoir was flooded and it created Reservoir Road, that made this a main artery.
Okay. So where I, where I was headed with this is this. At some point in time, it's a town road. At some point in time, the town gave zoning permits and allowed, probably through the town office, permitting for septic systems, wells, et cetera. And if we're starting to have a problem where these things are, are, are being an issue, then we've got another, another direction that we need to come from. And, and we have to include that in these grant applications, that we've got some sort of either well or septic issue that, that may also be, be becoming a concern here with this road and the drainage and whatever's happening out there.
The only one either, is that house bugging?
The, the point being that, that the town has been involved with this all along, with the road, the road being a town road, permitting being allowed to put housing in there and, and now encroaching on some of that infrastructure. You know, it's, it's hard to say we don't have some responsibility here, whatever that, whatever that looks like.
Forrest? Um, three points. I agree with Rika. The quickest thing is to minimize more damage and support closing that road to through traffic during the heaviest part of the mud season. Secondly, I agree with developing a long-range plan on how to address mud issues throughout town, however you feel that that's appropriate. And the third, developing a policy that would give him the power to close roads in response to mud issues.
Yeah, without taking time, just... He just, he has the authority.
He's got his finger on the pulse. He knows where they are. He should be by our policy, give him the authority to make those determinations. Doesn't solve your problem, but at least will help minimize the traffic on it, making it worse if we can, and we've closed it before. I know you've closed Thrasher Road when we had some severe mud issues one year and it, it was wonderful. It shut the traffic right off. If that will help minimize the damage during this short period of time, why not do it?
Again, it's a Band-Aid.
I know that. But it's a cheap one. It doesn't cost us anything.
All I can do is say, locals only, no through traffic.
And if we develop a policy that allows us to put fines on that, so you've got some teeth in it, of course, then we got, who's gonna, who's gonna watch it?
Well, there was a lot of people, maybe you say that, there was a lot of people that were turning around before they...
Yeah. Most people do.
Most people can't read, illiterate or something. But, and then they turn around once they see that it's bad. You know, they get, I got a lot of that. I got one kid that came down, he was stuck. He comes down, you're gonna pull me out. I said, no, I'm not pulling you out. I said, I'm not going in that cesspool. I'm sorry, you're, you're gonna be there. And finally somebody did push him out. But, but in the meantime, I asked him, I said, didn't you see the sign? You know, it's on the cess here. And he goes, oh yeah, but I didn't think it was that bad, you know?
We can't speak to that issue.
My point was, the majority of people turned around once they...
I can't speak to Thrasher when you closed it. It was wonderful. It was a noticeable difference.
I can, I'm only, I'm limited on what I can do. I can't really close a public road unless it's a policy. So that would solve it.
So we need to work on that as quickly as we can.
Yep, absolutely.
Whatever you need.
And I can change the signs. Once I get a policy, I can say residents only.
Yep, yep.
And have a policy.
Well, I don't think we're gonna solve your problem tonight or the major shortcuts.
But we're on it.
You're, you're doing a good job and I appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
And, and all we can do is, let's hope not a whole lot more gravel goes in the road until maybe we can do something. Because if you're closing a road, there's not gonna be any more gravel. Should be no more gravel coming off the road.
This year, I don't know if you noticed, we put everything in one lane. The intention is to get the, the stone over there too and pick it and haul it out. That was our intention for, plus that was the wettest lane.
Computer stone.
Over there.
Like I said, I do come to your foot favor than anybody.
No, it's a, everybody has heard of it.
A lot of money in my, damaging my property.
I would love every road to be so we don't have this problem.
Okay.
I think it's also like emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
I, I travel every road multiple times a day this time of year, like seven days a week. I'm calling the police, I'm calling the police chiefs, I'm letting them know, go this way, don't go that way. You can make it to this address, you can't make it to that address. So it is a struggle.
Okay. I thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, can I ask Brendan a question?
About?
He made a comment that they were, he was hoping to use the FEMA funds to get a head start on the capital. And I'm sure with FEMA, there's, I'm sure you've checked into what the policy would be. But couldn't some of those funds be used...
That's what we're gonna, we'll be looking into that.
The, the problem with using funds like that, one initial problem would be, what do you do for the next level? You got the money for that.
It's gotta be strategic.
When are you gonna get the money next time?
Yep.
I guess next, if you'd be happy, but what about... That's another one. Sorry, I didn't mention Gulf Road. So, hey, thank you everybody. I really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you all for being so respectful.
No idea. Little something sitting down, Ray. You're next on the thingy for highway update. We're gonna keep you right up there at the microphone.
Try to be really quick. Sorry, I didn't mean to take so long. I'm on that one.
Oh my goodness. I had no idea that was such a...
Highway Department update. I've been asked to do these periodically for you folks. I just wanna start with what we have going on for grants right now. Some of these are not highway grants, but they're grants that I pursued for the town. So one is Maple Street Buyout, Hardeman's Highway. It's a flood resilience grant. It's from Emergency Management for the State of Vermont. It's 100% no match. They will buy a house, they will tear the house down and they'll make it greenscape. You can't build there again. The reason I picked this project was it's on top of a culvert. We have a culvert in our road and then there's an old millwork or old walls and stuff that go underneath the house. So if we ever replace the culvert, we gotta jack the house up, redo the whole foundation. The gentleman's interested in selling. His sister unfortunately had passed away, so nobody's living there now. So he came to me and said, you know, what can we do? I've been working on it for a few years. We just got the grant. So that's done. The, the loss to the town will be the tax revenue at, you know, $3,000, $3,500 a year, whatever it might be. But you're gonna be spending 10 times that if we ever had to replace that culvert and jack the house up and put a whole new foundation into that as well. The other one is a Bowen, the Bowen Hill project. This is something that's new. I, I initially tried doing this one for Wellwoods, but it didn't score well for their criteria. It's to redesign the whole road for drainage and mud. But it wouldn't work on Wellwoods because Wellwoods is not a hill and it doesn't directly go into a stream and it didn't meet the criteria for the state and for...
I don't know if you've ever biked up Wellwoods, but it is a hill.
Where this is, where this, where this is, isn't...
Yeah, I gotcha.
That's 100% match. It started out really low. They talked me into trying to get more money. They wanna use this project as like a, it's the first time they've done funding this way. It started by going to A and R meetings and talking to the folks that have the money and how they're spending their money. And I had, I had talked to some people about spending money on engineering and designing to fix the problems. We have it already designed, so if it washes out again, we can give that to FEMA and build it right. Because a lot of the complaints after Irene were things was built and they weren't built to the spec they wanted. That's where I, so anyway, this, this project is new. It's 100% no match and they're really encouraging us to come back. And if we do decide to fix it, go back and try to get more funding from them to fix it. And that also would be 100%.
So the, the match is just for the engineering?
No match.
I mean, sorry, the grant is just for the engineering?
Scoping study for the engineering from the interstate all the way down to Roberts Road. It's about a half a mile.
Yep.
There's drainage issues, there's mud issues, there's washout issues. The road's lower than both sides of it. So this is kind of a skinny pick, I guess. So that's, that's fairly exciting. The other one is the Perkinsville Bike and Pedestrian Grant. That's something we got a year and a half ago. We're getting to the point now, Logan left. He's gonna be in charge of that project now, I believe, at Regional Planning. It's not really a highway project, but I'm involved helping out with it. But that is a study to see about what to do with pedestrian and bike safety. And it could also, at the same time, do traffic calming as part of the project. So it kinda overlaps. There's a lot of complaints about the speed of cars going through the village of Perkinsville. As you all know, that big truck came and took out the whole hydrant. That cost $38,000 bucks. Plus it's dangerous. Nobody wants to ride or walk. With, with the possibility of poison can yield fundraising and investing some money into that, it'd be nice to be able to have people walk from Upper Falls Road up to that... it'd be nice to be able to have people walk from Upper Falls Road up to that project, up to that site. That's the goal. Another problem there is pulling out of Quarry Road. You can't see looking towards Springfield at all. We can talk to that homeowner, maybe jack the property back, build a retaining wall, help him get a nice flat lawn, plus get rid of the trees he wants to get rid of. There's a lot of stuff. I just hope people get involved and do the input. Just, it'd be a scoping study, just like the one for Poisonfield, where they want input. If you guys can help out with that, that'd be great. FEMA update, Little Scutney Road. We have the bid almost ready to go out. Todd's still working on it. As soon as that's done, we're going to put it out to bid, and hopefully that'll be done before fall. At the end of fall this year, we're going to find out. Upper Falls has already been awarded. We are waiting for them to start construction as soon as they can get their permit. It'll be until probably the end of May before the state will let them dig or get in the river. We had a flood incident on Tarble Hill Road. We lost both lanes going down the entire hill. Beaver Dam let go on Stevens Road in Cavendish.
Oh, Jesus.
Flash flood came down the hill. There's a driveway with a really big culvert in it. It's a big cement header. The water was up to the guardrail over that, and that's where it jumped out and went into the road. And the road at this time of year is soft compared to the shoulders are frozen, so the water took almost 20 loads of gravel to get the road.
Oh, my God.
Going up through there, and we hauled away seven or eight loads of crud at the bottom of the road. We took the excavator and the loader, put it all up. Also, Little Scutney Road was washed at the same time. We did fix that. Any questions? Oh, special thanks to town of Cavendish. They came down with two trucks, all material from the pit to our shop to help us out with that incident on Tarble Hill.
Forrest? Two questions. Update on a salt shed?
It's on the agenda for future agenda items. It is, there is a design in place.
I said at the last meeting you would say something about it at this meeting in your highway update.
Yes, thank you. The people have designed four different salt sheds. For a little background, six years ago, when I first took over, I think Mike is the only one in the board that's still here, we had a meeting at the highway garage that used to float around, and we went out and did a tour. And I presented a plan to try to get a grant to design a proper salt shed for the town. The goal was to get an adequate salt shed that meets all the standards for pollution and everything, and only have to pay 10% or 20% of it. So if it's a $500,000 salt shed, and we get it for $100,000, let's say, that's good. The other option is to build as-is, where-is, and spend $100,000 to $150,000, but not have it be improved. So that was the, the whole goal was to have a good design that we could spend the same amount of money and get the real salt shed, or spend the same amount of money and get what we have as a last resort. So that's where we're at. We need to award that. We need to approve a design. And once that design is approved, we can start trying to get grants. The backup plan is, and always has been, build whatever we can, that we can afford, up to $100,000, $150,000, when this salt shed fails, which is going to be soon.
Well, it was my understanding that we got an extension on the grant or something in order to meet with Dave Fuller to find out what his alternative plan was, and that wasn't successful. So where do we stand now?
Meeting on Wednesday with regional planning. And it'll be on either the next agenda or the one after that, I believe.
Okay.
Depending on the alternative that we come up with on the Wednesday.
So the original goal was to develop this plan and have the ultimate shed that meets every standard. The cost of 10% to 20% to the town.
I'm totally in favor of that. I'm just curious where we were in that process.
We're at the point where the board needs to decide if they want to approve one of those for. Or, I can only have one design, so I don't want to waste, I don't want to waste the grant on designing something that's not.
Doable.
And I thought at last meeting we had discussed.
Doesn't meet the goals.
Sorry.
I thought we had discussed that, right? They had attempted to reach out to Dave. He had, right, that wasn't successful, so that's why I thought we were coming back to make a decision, but maybe that's at next meeting.
I saw it's on future agenda items.
Right. We're just meeting one more time with Mark, and then from that point, we'll put it back on the agenda, so.
Yeah, thank you, Brandon.
And I have one more question.
Would you have some input that Dave has given us that we'll probably use in that meeting on Wednesday to potentially develop another alternative?
That's good. I have one more question. And you may not know the answer, but what happened to the buyout of the Amston store?
The gentleman passed away.
Right.
And the wife inherited the property.
Right.
And she did not want to sell.
So she didn't, okay.
And forced somebody to do it.
Nope, I understand. I didn't realize that she had backed out.
The old Amston store building, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
So what's going to happen? Do we know? She's going to do anything with it, really?
She's, I think, didn't she move out of state? It seemed to me she moved down to the Carolinas or something.
That's why above me. Sorry, I don't.
Are you done, Ray?
I hope so.
Okay. On to town manager updates.
All right, just a couple of quick updates. We met last week on our purchasing policy, and we almost put it on the agenda, but we decided that we really need like a couple more weeks to work on it. So this week, we're meeting one more time with the treasurer, and then we should be ready at the next select board meeting. We just want to make sure we get it right, and we have the policy, and then we have like internal procedures that we're also developing. So I'll show you both the policy and the procedures that we're proposing. The procedure is really being administrative, like how the policy is carried out, so. The capital plan consists of technology, fire trucks, fire equipment, highway trucks and heavy equipment and machinery, highway equipment, police vehicles, and police equipment. So those are the big-ticket items that we're looking to capture. The technology portion is, the biggest thing is getting an inventory of everything that we have. Since we didn't have an inventory before this, it's a big undertaking to develop an inventory of all these departments, especially when it comes to equipment. The executive assistant to finance took a stab at this. Last year, we sort of paused that because we knew we wouldn't have it done by fall. And the fire departments were discussing what equipment's going to look like in the future. So we're trying to flush that out throughout this year. But police vehicles is 100% done, technology is 50% done. I'd say we're at around 75% for fire trucks. We're just trying to flush out a couple of things with those in our committee meetings. And then fire equipment on the AVFD side's about 75% complete. Westwell Field's 100% complete. Highway trucks and heavy machinery, I think we've done stuff with that, but we aren't quite finished. Is that right, Ray? On your trucks?
There was some questions on longevity or certain equipment, the excavators news, we have no idea what all that's going to be.
And then I don't believe we've gotten to highway equipment inventory yet heavily.
Or highway?
Yeah. It's all done.
Yeah, all the equipment.
Okay, I have not seen that yet.
Steve, he has numbers. He was putting it together. We just, he had a few questions on longevity.
Yep.
Especially the excavator.
Okay.
Or for replacement.
So that's where we're at with the capital plan. We anticipate being ready for town meeting next year. But it, because it's going to need to be a special article to discuss. It's a big undertaking, but it's a worthwhile thing to do. It will save the town money long-term. I think on the fire trucks alone, we calculated almost $1 million in savings. So, and all those numbers we've presented to you guys once we get it done through a PowerPoint presentation and a full report.
When you say there's a million-dollar savings on fire trucks, is there?
I believe that's just an interest savings by not borrowing money to pay for fire trucks. Because right now, for example, the fire truck that we just purchased, we're paying about $10,000 a year just on that one note year over year as the loan matures on average.
Okay.
So when you look at that and calculate, how many highway trucks do we have? How many fire trucks and police cars and so forth? We've been, we've had the, we've had the ability to pay cash for police cars for the past several years because of ARPA, but we don't. ARPA's gone now. So those are being built into the capital plan, so we can be prepared when they do come up for replacement.
Yeah, I was just curious about what that, what that million dollars represented in a timeline. But I think you answered that with the fact that it's interest.
And this job, it's very, very, it's very technical too, like especially when it comes to the equipment side of things, because there's a ton of it. And since we, that's like your starting point is the inventory. Yeah, it's easy with like the things that you can see very easily, like the trucks, the fire trucks, for example. But when you get into the nitty-gritty and the departments themselves and capturing the serial numbers on everything, it's pretty time-consuming. But a lot of progress was made last year, and we do anticipate having it done this year, so. Just need to flush out what we're doing with trucks and how many people we're going to have on the fire department, so forth. Just another reminder, the transfer station is closed on April 20th for Easter. We revised the appointed official application, and we created a reappointment application to make it easier for people that are, that have already been appointed to a board, to be reappointed. And both of those applications are on the volunteer opportunities page on the website. We're going to be doing a lot of work with that page on the website. I've collected some feedback already, and I plan to start addressing it more when I get back from vacation. I think that's all I have tonight, unless there's any other questions.
Okay. Anything we need to add to the future agenda items besides what you've already have on there?
Town plan? And I'd like to continue the discussion on the boards and committees organization. On the what? Boards and committees? Thought that was Brandon?
Yeah, got it.
Anything else? Okay.
We should probably put road closure policy on a future agenda item, just on the list, so it's not lost in that conversation, since we just had that conversation, should have made that.
Okay. Number 13, appointments. We have, let's see, Board of Listers, nothing. Budget Committee, nothing.
Budget Committee has two, I think. They're on the table.
They are?
Yep.
No, they're not.
I have, I have two right here.
They're not Budget Committee.
Oh, no, they're not Budget Committee, are they?
Are you trying to?
Whoops.
Dr. Murray did submit a reappointment letter for the Budget Committee, and the wrong one was printed out. I did not get you the reappointment form. I can pull it up on the projector if you guys would like to see it.
So the only one we really have is this Wayne, the Wayne Johnson. One is the only one we have.
These are both Veterans Committee.
These are, August is doing Veterans Committee and.
They're both veterans.
And the Budget Committee.
And the Budget Committee, we don't have one of, but he's.
I turned in today, I didn't realize there was a reappointment form, or I would have just done that, but I emailed today appointment letters to stand the Budget Committee and stand Veterans Committee.
Yep.
So we have them, right?
Yeah, I'm going to pull it up on the projector right now.
So the Budget Committee would be August Murray, right, Chen? A motion, a motion, do we want to do them all at once or one at a time? There's a few on here, I see. So we got August Murray for the Budget Committee. A motion.
Yeah, he just pointed out this is dated January.
Yeah, but he's going to.
I thought Brandon just said that he printed the wrong one, right? That's what I'm confused.
I sent in one page.
There it is.
Right there.
You do have a Zoom function, right, Brandon?
Yep.
Okay, just checking. Cause that's.
Right there.
So this is from March 4th, 2025, for the Budget Committee? And then?
We have his other one here, Veterans.
Okay.
Yeah, Wayne Johnson, right?
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far yet. Let's do, can we do the Budget Committee one first? I don't want to get lost here.
Yep.
August Murray, Budget Committee, is on the floor.
So move.
Second up.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to go down the list here. For fence viewers, we have two vacancies. We have, I don't have a form for this person. Lauren Smith.
We do have a form for that person. Typically, in the past, it would be administrative, and we'd review the applications and put them on the select board agenda. Do you guys want the physical forms going forward? Okay, so going forward, you'll receive the applications. I won't send them out to every, like, when I do the select board packets, because it contains people's cell phone numbers and email addresses, I'll send it to the select board, like, and I email it just for you guys.
Can we just back up on something, something that I think we should put into practice? When we make a motion to appoint somebody to a committee, can we say for what term or when the term is going to end?
It says one year right on it.
But can we put that in the motion so it's clear?
Oh, sorry.
I'm just asking if we could do that, just it needs.
Would help keep track of it moving forward through the.
Makes it clear for the minutes, so that when the town clerk goes to check.
So August Murray is for one year to end, to end March 2026.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Term ending March 2026.
And I don't, do we want to do this Lauren Smith, or do we want to?
We don't have an application.
I can pull up Lauren's application on the screen as well.
Okay, and it's a one-year appointment? One year, one-year appointment.
For fence viewer.
For a fence viewer.
And you do have a document, Brandon?
I would prefer not to put it on the screen because it contains phone number and everything. I can pass it around my phone if you'd like to see it.
Can we just wait until the next one?
That's your.
I'm good.
It says, it says.
I'm good with it.
It says fence viewer. I can give you the reason. Semi-retired and over 42 years old in all aspects of fences, guardrail, ornamental iron fences, handrails, handicap rails, automation controls, et cetera.
Can I just ask, is, how is that different from the ones we have?
Well, if I put it on the screen, it shares it on Zoom for everybody.
Oh, totally understood. That's the difference. That makes sense.
Sorry.
Okay. But these have phone numbers on them.
Yeah.
I understand. That goes out to the public. I get you. Okay, that makes sense. All right. So you have an application from Lauren Smith.
I do, yep.
So we want to make a motion on the floor?
No, that is mine.
Okay.
Motion to appoint Lauren Smith, fence viewer, one year. Term expiring 2026.
March 2026.
March 2026.
Yep, thank you.
There's a second?
I'll second that.
Nathan, second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Okay. Where's, okay, that's down there. Tree warden, one vacancy, one year. Did he fill out one? Ryan Gumbart?
He actually filled out the reappointment form, and his reason for reappointment, "I wish to continue caring for the town's shade trees." And then the question, "Is there anything you would like to bring to the town's attention at this time?" He said, "I have been tree warden for the past few years. My background is in forestry, which included college courses on tree insects and disease in general tree care."
We all know his qualifications.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to appoint Ryan Gumbart, tree warden, one year, term expiring March 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, Veterans Memorial Committee. We have four vacancies that are one-year terms. We have two here in front of us. We have Colonel August Murray, or Doctor, whichever he wants to go by. You have both on the paper. Okay. Seeking for the term, and we also have Wayne Johnson on here who's seeking for a term as well.
Motion to appoint Wayne Johnson and Dr. August Murray. Veterans Memorial Committee, one year, terms expiring March 2026.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. We have a wearer of coal for one year. Mr. John Arison loves the job, I guess.
I do not have an appointed official application for this position.
All right, so we should wait on that then until we.
Yep.
Okay, we'll hold off on that.
I'll reach out to him and let him know.
Okay.
Okay. Any other business?
Could I prevent public comment? In support of John Arison?
Oh, well, we, I don't think that's the issue. He just doesn't have his, he hasn't filled out his form. He just doesn't have his, he hasn't filled out his form.
Okay.
He's done it for years. He'll fill out his form.
He'll take care of it.
I was gonna offer public support.
Oh. Is that it? Nothing? Does anybody have anything else? Nothing? Okay. Approve the warrant.
We're still going forward.
Who's doing it going where? Do it going where?
Kelly did read it for a long time.
And she did. Can I still do it?
You absolutely may.
I don't see the problem with it.
I don't mind reading it.
Please do.
Okay. General Fund. Payroll, $21,226.15. Operating expenses, $62,494.46. Highway payroll, $11,603.38. Operating expenses, $40,717.76. Solid waste payroll, $2,077.25. Operating expenses, $17,284.11. Library payroll, $2,399.74. FEMA money, $200. ARPA, $10,863.25. Library fundraising, $77.18 for a total of $11,140.43. For grand totals of payroll, $37,306.52. Operating expenses, grand total, $131,636.76.
Second.
Okay, now I got my questions.
Look at all those sticky notes.
I want to know why we keep having late fees. Superior propane, page three of five in the general fund. We pay our bills every other week. Why do we have late fees?
I'll take a look into the Superior propane bill.
This is, that was last time. It was a different company.
Yep.
Remember that?
Yep. You see him?
Last time, I remember you putting that up.
Yeah. That's all I have on this.
Okay.
I just don't like to see the late fees. It gives us a bad name.
So I do know that what's been happening is when we get an invoice in the mail, by the time we get it on the warrant, it's too late. So what we've done is we've started creating online accounts and then trying to keep track of them that way. Online accounts, so you can get the bill rather than wait for it to get in the mail. So that, that's one reason, but I'll look into it a little bit more and get back to you guys in the next meeting.
Is there a way that we can authorize like these standard type expenses that are reoccurring?
It's in the new purchasing...